Good evening, everyone. Let's please stand for the pledge and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Pastor Rick Ponzo from Calvary Chapel Fountain Hills. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Adam Mayer and town council and town manager, staff, and all of the town. I just want to take a moment just to thank everyone. A year ago, our house burned to the ground, and we just moved back in about three weeks ago. We have been blessed by the outpouring of love, support, and encouragement from the whole town. And so, I just want to say on behalf of my wife and I, thank you so much for everything that you've done to help us get through this. And so, in that, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this town council that you brought together to bless them with the wisdom, knowledge, and discernment to make decisions on behalf of this town. I pray that you would give them wisdom tonight, clarity in the decisions that they have to make, and, Lord, that it would be a blessing to this town, Lord, that you would protect our town, that you would help them make decisions that lead us in the right direction. We know that you are able, and we're grateful for these people who have given their lives to do this very thing in this place here tonight. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sharnow?
Present.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Friedel?
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Present.
Thank you. We start, as always, with our reports. I think our town manager has something.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, and for the public who are here tonight, I'm very pleased to report that this Saturday is our 12th Annual Make a Difference Day. And in light of the past years where we have had our volunteers who have been able to work inside homes and assist people, this year, the focus is really doing outside maintenance, so yard work, might be painting, any kind of maintenance of that sort. We have, the event will take place from 8:00 to noon, and we have 37 residential projects and a total of 267 volunteers. And of those volunteers, there's a number of folks that are represented with various different Fountain Hills clubs and churches participating. And there's really so many, I'm not going to list them all, but it's really awesome to see the community come together and try to help their fellow Fountain Hillian with this care and trying to help them with things around the house that they're just unable to do. So anyways, we're looking forward to another successful year, and I think this is going to be a great year despite being just outdoors. So we're making the best of the situation with the pandemic. That's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, Grady. I want to thank our Kim Wicklund, our volunteer coordinator, and all of these organizations. It's going to be a great day. I think it might even be in the 90s, so we got out of this 100-bit. Any council have anything to report or anything you'd like to say? No? I just have, I want to talk about the election just a little bit to just get some of those dates out there. The deadline to register was October 15th. October 23rd is the last date to request an early ballot. I just wanted you to please note that our Public Works Director and the Town Manager have worked to make sure that the post office is accessible through this construction for anybody that wants to mail their ballot. Make sure that you mail it by October 27th. Voters can drop their completed early ballots off here at Town Hall during regular hours, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 to 6:00 on the second floor. This ballot drop box will be available until 7:00, though, on the actual Election Day, November 3rd. You can start voting in person on October 22nd at Plaza Fountain Side from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., except Sundays. They're closing at 5:00 on Monday, the 2nd, but they're going to be open like regular, like we're used to, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day. And they also have a ballot box like we have here, so it should be covered well. I was going to ask our town clerk if he had anything to add to any of that? Nothing? Your information is on our website, and so please make sure you call if you have any questions or email us. The only activity I had this time was going to the Arizona Association of Economic Development's Zoom meetings, transportation infrastructure, and selling Arizona, how we compete. I have been invited, not only did our council members can go, but the councilwomen elect, and there were actually four different sessions, and some of them were able to go to all of those. And there's a lot of resources out there. You went, right? And united in effort to try and get us to recover, get to as close to recovery as we can. So we're on the same page there, and appreciate it that you go and you were sending us the reports and stuff. Next, so anything from anybody? We'll go to these proclamations. So the first one is Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Whereas the citizens of the Town of Fountain Hills rely on the town to experience a high quality of life in our community, cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital city and town services such as fire, police, emergency medical response to ensure safe communities. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life of residents, such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, and recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs. Whereas it's important for the Town of Fountain Hills to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect. And whereas it is one of the responsibilities of town officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means. And whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the town can remain exceptional elements in the quality of life of our community. Therefore, I, Jenny Dickey, Mayor of Town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim that the Town of Fountain Hills joins the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state in Arizona in declaring October 19th to the 23rd as Arizona Cities and Towns Weeks. Week. I'm going to present this to our town manager, Andre.
And I'm very happy and delighted to accept this.
The boss of the town.
We will be proudly displaying this out in our lobby. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I have another one, and this one is, I'm so glad you all are here for this. This is our Veterans Day, because this is our last meeting before Veterans Day. So whereas we are pleased and honored to pay tribute on this day to the dedicated veterans who have served this great nation with great distinction, both in peacetime and in war, and whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much to the defense of the freedoms which we all continue to enjoy. And whereas Americans have an abiding faith in the ideals and strengths on which our great nation was founded, and our democratic process, and in the women and men of the armed forces who have served our country so well. And whereas in honor of these dedicated women and men, we pledge our continued defense of the nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of unity, freedom, and democracy. And whereas on this occasion, let us all recognize the great need of fostering a spirit of loyalty to the ideals that have served as the foundation of this great country, liberty and justice for all. Therefore, I, Jenny Dickey, Mayor Fountain Hills, urge our citizens to honor veterans on November 11th, 2020, and commit themselves to unity and the preservation of our liberties. And I look forward to later in the program when we talk about the Purple Hearts, and we really are happy that you're here. Thank you. Next, we are going to do recognition of our outgoing board and commission members. We had a, I'm sorry? They're going to be part of the program. Yes, thank you. Our outgoing board and commission members, we have a little, we had a little bit of a pause, because we usually have April and October is when they usually have their seat, their terms, right? But with everything going on, we didn't do that. So we had a lot of our, all of our council members on all the subcommittees doing the interviews, and now is the time for us to thank those who have served. We're a community that's always relied on volunteers. We're very grateful for the dedicated service of our volunteers, all our board and commission members. I want to thank Don Doty, Darian Slater, Vicki Dirksen, and Jerry Friedel for your generous, being so generous with your time and talents for the good of our town. I think that Vicki's here, and I know that Jerry's here, so if you want, we can go down there, and from a distance, I can give these up, and maybe we can get a photo. Okay, Vicki, thank you, Sister Cities Advisory Commission, and Jerry was on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. So thank you so much for your service. You can tell we're smiling. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so now, we have our scheduled public appearances and presentations. First up, we have our presentation of the Purple Heart flag to the Town of Fountain Hills. I believe we have Chuck Byers here, the Department of Arizona State Commander, Military Order of the Purple Heart, Mike Overmeyer.
Mr. Overmeyer couldn't make it.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Phil Yuen, I recognize, Senior Vice Commander. And you can introduce yourselves and whatever you'd like to do, and our wish is your command here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, and thank you, everyone here. You know, as the, you named Fountain Hills as a Purple Heart town and part of the Purple Heart cities that we have here in the United States, and we're very pleased and proud that you've given us that recognition. So on behalf of the Department of Arizona, as a State Commander, I wanted to present the town with an official Purple Heart flag to be raised. To be honest, thank you. Amen.
Properly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I didn't know. Thank you so much for coming. That's beautiful. Do you see I have my pin on today?
Thank you so much for your support.
You're welcome. Oh, my gosh.
For the work and all the trouble I've wanted to hear from the town, but also in Arizona and the United States. Happy to thank you.
Thank you so much.
So let's go proudly on your flagpole.
Absolutely, and I think.
I think it's going to be raised.
Yes, Justin's going to come up and tell us the plan, and people who want to come can do that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Give this to you then.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, if I may? To thank these veterans and all of the veterans, and to celebrate this gracious gift, the town will be hoisting this flag for the first time ever tomorrow morning at sunrise in front of Town Hall, and all are encouraged to attend if they can. We will have some photos, but we will not have a live streaming video.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you for thinking of this. This has been a little project that, you know, something positive that's happening, and we really appreciate it, and happy Veterans Day also. Thank you. Our next presentation is an update by the Fountain at 50 Committee. Sandy, welcome. Sandy is the real boss of everything here. Sandy, your senior is taking care of this, and I don't know if Rachel's on the phone or not, but.
She is. If she needs to fill in, I believe, I heard her chime in, so.
The voice from above. Well, hi. Last time I was here was in December, and we had a proclamation at that time declaring the next year as a year of celebration for the Fountain at 50. Oops, my mic, oops, sorry. I'd like to refresh your memory about all of our committee members who have worked so hard all year long. They are Jay Schlum, Sherri Cos, Phyllis Kern, Carol Carroll, Jenny Willigrod, Stan Ziefert, Sharon Grisbowski, Jim Dickey, Brent Crukschenk, Rachel Goodwin, and Linda Ayers. We kicked off the year of celebration by participating last year. I'm going to kind of give you a rundown of what we've done this year and the challenges. We kicked off with the Thanksgiving, marching in the Thanksgiving Day Parade with a beautiful antique car, and then mysteriously, our golden 50, giant 50s appeared in the park, and everybody wondered what that was for, but now they all know. We celebrated or commemorated the 30th anniversary of incorporation of the town by serving cake to 600 people roughly at the Stroll and the Glow last year. And the Civic and Cultural Association announced the sculpture, the Fountain of Light, that would become part of the celebration for the anniversary of the fountain. So then in January, we were part of the museum's history festival. We rolled out our Fountain at 50 merchandise. Our website and social media accounts came live. The Times began their wonderful monthly history series. The museum was collecting oral histories and planning for their rotating exhibits to be on display, both at the community center and at the museum. And the library started a children's program, a series of children's programs about the fountain. Then in February, the pump house wall was prepped and ready for its new mural, and we had a very successful event celebrating the Pony Express. And at that event, we received through the Pony Express a number of letters from municipalities around the valley congratulating Fountain Hills on the anniversary of the fountain. The mayor read a lot of those letters, and they were just wonderful. We were so happy and so excited after that Pony Express event, and we were poised, we were ready to go out and hit the ground running and celebrate this whole year of celebration. And then it was March. And like everyone else, we sat there and watched as event after event became canceled. But we didn't lose our enthusiasm, and we kept planning for our December celebration. Our committee members maintained their enthusiasm, their optimism, and kept contacting their groups and kept them informed of what we were planning and where we were going. But with COVID-19 always in our thoughts, we had to come up with ideas to keep the celebration alive in people's minds, but not attract a lot of people to any one place at any one time. So some of the things we've done are, we put the banners up on the avenue, which way is the avenue? That way. The beautiful banners are up on the light poles in the avenue. I'm sure you've seen them and admired them, and maybe you could even have one at your house if you like. We created the Fountain at 50 photo contest. We invited Fountain Hills residents to submit a photo, their favorite photo of the fountain, and they will be on display next door at the community center starting February, November the 3rd. So please stop by and admire the work of your neighbors and friends. And just a little aside, I want to thank Fountain Hills Photo Club for their help in putting this all together for us. Choco Finn, our favorite place in Fountain Hills, created a Fountain at 50 logo chocolate bar for us, and they are going to be conducting a contest where one lucky winner is going to win 50 pounds of chocolate. I know it's a dream come true for most of us. Just go in, buy your candy bar, and your name will be entered in the contest for the 50 pounds of chocolate. We decided we couldn't let the year go by without a time capsule, so we are going to plant or bury a time capsule for 25 years, and we are asking our friends, our neighbors, our community associations, our businesses, to provide something for the time capsule. Not, can't be too big, time capsule isn't that big, but something that's significant, representing the last 50 years. The community center holiday event this year will have the theme of the Golden Holiday Celebration, and people are encouraged to decorate the trees and wreaths that are going on display with the anniversary, to celebrate the anniversary. And then Parks and Rec is going to be hosting a virtual trivia night focusing on the last 50 years. So we're hoping those kinds of things keep people interested and keep people aware that we are going to, you know, there is something going on, even though we all can't get together to do it. So that leaves the question of what actually were we planning, are we planning, for the December anniversary? Well, our original plans were to celebrate on December 4th, 5th, and 6th, and that included the lighting ceremony for the sculpture of the Fountain of Light on December 4th, and our celebration in conjunction with the Chamber's Stroll and the Glow, we were planning to add the balloon glow and a celebration in the park. And then on the 6th, we were going to end the weekend with a gala festive anniversary dinner. But due to town restrictions and the ongoing concern about bringing that many people together at one place at one time, we have decided to postpone our celebration. The Chamber is still going forward with their holiday stroll in the glow, but it just will not have the anniversary components as part of it. So we have decided we are going to move our events back to January 21st, or, excuse me, January 30th, 2021. We're hoping by then that conditions will improve and that we can have the celebration then. So on that day, we will have the lighting ceremony for the Fountain of Light. We will have the balloon glow and a celebration in the park. Now, you know, hopefully, like I say, hopefully, we will be able to do this by then, but we will keep a close eye on what is happening with this pandemic and where it's going, and if we need to adjust, we will adjust. So that leaves just one date left, and that's December 15th, which is the actual anniversary of the fountain. So on that day, lucky you, this is a council night, so we were going to be back for the council meeting on the 15th. We will have the time capsule here, so if there's something you want to add to the time capsule, plan ahead and bring it that night. We will have a proclamation celebrating the 50th anniversary. We'll have a cake, because we love our cakes, so we'll have cake and cake here for everyone. And we'll take some time out to unveil the new lighting system at the fountain. So that's where we've been, and hopefully where we are going. But as we say, everything is subject to change these days, but sooner or later, one way or another, we are going to celebrate. So, I mean, anything I've missed, any.
Anybody have any questions for Sandy or for Rachel, who I think is on the phone? No?
No.
No questions?
Well, thank you very much, and I will see you in December.
Well, Sandy, I want to say too that, you know, this, obviously, this year hasn't been anywhere near what anybody expected on so many losses and, you know, real losses that people have faced in the last eight months. So, you know, I know that we're disappointing and to not be able to have these celebrations, and you've all been so good at putting that in perspective. I just want to recognize you and everybody on the committee for your creativity and your good humor throughout, your determination as these activities did get either changed or postponed or even canceled. And while you're continuing to navigate through this, this uncertainty that we have, like you just mentioned, I just want to thank you so much. I want to thank our staff who've been involved with this and helping all along the way, all the community groups that volunteered to do things, some were able to do them, some maybe in the future, individuals, and all our businesses and the vendors who have been so flexible on, you know, the, everything from the fireworks to, you know, where we were going to have the dinner. And we just really appreciate your commitment for making this a special time for Fountain Hills. 2020 is, like I said, what we thought, but we are making the best of it, and I just really want to thank you very much for your leadership in this.
Well, thank you very much. It's been challenging, but it's also been fun and, you know, a challenge to get creative and come up with things, so, hey, we're going to do it one way or another, so. We're determined.
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy. Thank you to you and your entire committee.
Thank you.
Thank you to you and your entire committee. This is going to go down as the year that the social activities were nonexistent, and from my perspective, I'd like it to be a forgotten year in many respects because of that. I would encourage your committee to maybe come up with an alternative plan and give you all of the opportunities that you deserve to truly have a full year of celebrations, which was the original plan, and to have that spirit and that buzz in town of what we've done in the last 50 years and that the best is yet to come. So I would like to see, and there will be a day, that this mask ordinance will be removed and the concerns in regards to COVID will subside, and we will be able to have events that day, that moment in time. I would love to see your committee at that point, start your year and celebrate, and I would be in full support of that, and I think the town would appreciate, and so would everyone, to have that opportunity to really come together and celebrate.
I hope so, too. And you know what? If all else fails, there's always the Fountain at 51, so we don't.
That's right.
We can think about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have our monthly update by our captain, Larry Kratzser. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. So for our monthly update tonight, I wanted to talk about just some of the things that we've been seeing lately, especially in the way of stats. I think we're going to see a stat increase, I'm almost certain we will, this year in the way of identity theft. And so, you know, if you read the Times paper each week, you'll see the law enforcement recap, and you'll see that, and I've spoke about this before, but we're seeing still a high number of fraudulent claims for unemployment benefits through the Arizona Department of Economic Security. Usually, when somebody finds out that their name or their personal information's been used to put in a fraudulent claim for unemployment benefits, they usually receive a debit card to their residence with unemployment benefits loaded onto those cards. So fortunately, most people that are honest or have some fear of being caught call and make a report that they received benefits that they didn't apply for, and they're concerned that their identity was used to gain that. So if they get, if they receive those benefits, they obviously have to call and make a police report when they call the Department of Economic Security. If they haven't done that already, they will request that they do that so that they can track. And then the Arizona Department of Economic Security does a pretty thorough investigation, and it's unfortunate because of the number of fraudulent claims. It's resulted in a lot of people who truly need and have a claim to those unemployment benefits. A lot of those benefits have been delayed while they try to sift through whose are legitimate and which ones are fraudulent. So, and unfortunately, we're seeing some calls for service that directly relate to people having some strains in life because of that. So, and, you know, we find out through talking to them or their family that their issues are directly related to some financial hardships that they're going through, and one that we just dealt with yesterday was directly related to that, the financial hardship the person was going through. So we will see an increase in those identity theft numbers. It's not unique to the Town of Fountain Hills. It's statewide, and, you know, it's pretty much across the nation. We're getting residents here who are receiving notification or benefits from other states like Florida and other states like that. So don't be alarmed when we see that, that jump. We'll probably explain it again in February when I do a stat presentation again after the year ends. And then I just wanted to talk, we're not really seeing a large increase in this area, but it's along the lines of fraud, but it's computer fraud. I've talked about this numerous times, but we still see, unfortunately, victims of computer fraud. We had one victim within the last month who fell victim of a fraud in this manner twice in a matter of a week. So she was defrauded out of about $5,000. And they're getting really sophisticated, the way that she found out that, the way she became involved as a victim in the fraud, the victim tried to log into their account for, you know, I won't be specific on here, but we're seeing large companies like Apple, Amazon, eBay tried to log into one of those accounts. The account came up with a warning, so there must have been malware or spyware on her computer saying that there was suspicious activity on her account, so she, her account was locked. It popped up with a 1-800 number for her to call. Well, that started the scam. That 1-800 number and that pop-up was all part of the scam. She allowed the person to go into, to remote into her computer, then. Then she allowed them to show her, walk her through how to get refunded for these fraudulent accounts. And they opened the bank account page, and then they were able to make some transactions from her bank account. Believing that they then, a couple of days later, rectified the situation, believing it was the company and legitimate folks of that company. She then got duped into the whole gift card scam where then they told her to rectify it. She would need to get some gift cards from various locations, give them the numbers, and they would be able to unfreeze the account and then be reimbursed. So we're still unfortunately seeing those, we're trying to get the word out still on that. The Fountain Hills Times, Bob Burns, has been great when we have some spikes in crime in those areas, getting the word out. I know now we have Bo Larson that we can work with too to get some information out, you know, in the quarterly articles he runs. And Councilmember Spelitz, going back to his idea several months ago when these were big, prior to, I guess it's been quite a while now, prior to the COVID pandemic, had made a suggestion and we fully implemented a plan to go out and talk to a lot of these local grocery stores about trying to identify that. I know I've talked about that before, I don't want to exhaust that point, but having some training and some education with those stores so that maybe their employees could identify maybe when an elderly person, well, someone's coming in, sorry about that, and purchasing large amounts of gift cards that maybe they can intervene and stop the fraud. So we're trying to be creative and come up with some online tools. We are kind of limited in what we are being asked to do in terms of voluntary contacts. And I know you can argue maybe it's not a voluntary or a required contact, but just to try to not have contacts, lessen the contacts as much as possible with COVID going on. But we're looking at ways to maybe do that, you know, via a Google session or a GoToMeeting. So we'll keep working on that to try to get the word out to those businesses and see if they can help us in that regard. And then I'll just wrap it up with some of the things that we're doing that are coming up, that we're participating in as we are able to. We are participating in Make a Difference Day, it's coming up this Saturday. We are also participating in the Fountain Hills Spooky Blast Halloween. We're happy to, again, be a meeting in person now for the first time in quite a while with the coalition meeting. And I know they're here tonight, some of the members, so we're looking forward to having an in-person meeting very soon. And then unfortunately, the DA Drug Takeback Program here that was scheduled for this Saturday, Arizona's not taking part in it. They have some issues with the warehouse and the storage, so they're, with COVID and everything, they're not doing it this year. But I just want to remind residents, we do have our drug drop box here. People can still come in whenever they want and drop those off. Obviously, town hall business hours and we can take that. So just want to make sure people understand they can still drop their unwanted drugs, their prescription medication off, and we'll gladly take them here in the drop box. And that is all I have for you guys for my update. If there's any questions or any comments, happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, Captain. David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cap, what's the MCSO's plan for the election, the day after the election? All police departments across the country are gearing up for possible social unrest. So what's MCSO's plan for the town? Are we going to go to a longer shift or an increasing manpower? Standby officers, things like that? If you can, I know you can't discuss exact logistics, but what's the plan so far?
Yeah, that's a great question. I know there's been a lot of talk and discussion. I've seen some things on, out in the news about certain police departments restricting vacation time and time off for employees. That's still being determined. I know our employees who work at the ACTIC, and it's basically the criminal intel unit, they're constantly monitoring threats or information on social media to see what's going around, to see where the staffing probably would be needed most or where if there were issues with civil unrest, where those would be more problematic. So there, I don't, we've not seen a formal plan yet, but they are working on our executive command of, have been keeping us in the loop on that. What I can tell you is we have restricted time off for employees from November 1st through the 10th currently. And that's subject to change if it exceeds that timeframe. So just like most other police departments and law enforcement agencies, we are preparing just in case there is some level of civil unrest, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody? Wanted to thank you, Captain, as always. You know, we appreciate all the work that you're doing to keep our community safe, especially during this kind of challenging time. In addition to your normal duties, you've been taking care of a lot of extra things. You've had some party house issues that you guys have just been right on top of, really helping our residents' quality of life. You've been taking care of, you know, a lot of things about the masks and the distancing and things that just you never would have dreamed of in the beginning of this year. And stolen signs and all kinds of things that really have you guys going. And I got to say, you're doing it all with heightened awareness from the public. And as always, you're very calm and professional. And you always answer my emails and is very responsive to a lot of the questions that constituents ask me. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think our last presentation is going to be from about our first quarter revenue update. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you recall earlier this year, we've committed to giving you regular updates on the town's finances. This is in relationship to the, what's going on to the statewide, regional, and local economy. We have a lot of revenues that we rely on, for instance, that are state shared revenues that we are, have expressed concerns and have tried to monitor these. So anyways, this is the second one we've given you since we started this. And I'm going to turn this over to David Pock, our finance director. I think what you're going to see is better than expected news. And it has a lot to do with, our local economy is a lot different than some of these other cities that have. They're really reliant on big ticket sales, like automobiles or, you know, running, you know, international airports. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pock for the presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. As Grady said, this is our first quarter revenue update. Just a quick note before we get started, this is just revenues. We don't look, we don't budget our expenditures month by month. We'll take a look at those when we do the council retreat and kind of see where we are as far as expenditures. But this is, this was the big question in June when you adopted the budget. We weren't sure where our revenues were going to go. And like Grady said, I think this is some, some good news, some reason to sigh a little bit of a relief as we go forward, so. All right, so just a summary. Overall, revenues were up 825,000 over what we had expected as far as our budgets go. That was across TPT and state shared revenues. Most of the TPT categories are outperforming last year. The state shared revenues are down slightly overall, but they're still within acceptable range. It's not that big of a difference. And there's still three quarters left, so we'll get into those towards the end. As everybody knows, there's a lot of uncertainty with COVID right now, a lot of uncertainty with regards to the election, different economic outcomes based on both of those. So as we get past those or start getting, at least getting near the end of that uncertainty, there should be even more reason to be optimistic. So overall net taxable activity, this doesn't, this isn't affect, this isn't affected by our rate increase last fiscal year. But overall, the increase increased 125 million in the town. That's an increase of 22 million compared to last year, so that's good news. As far as the total TPT collections, we had budgeted 2.65 million. We actually collected 3.43, $780,000 more overall across all different categories. That's increased 860,000 from last year. And of that 860,000, 340,000 was due to the increase, the 0.3% increase.
Thank you. I just, so you mentioned the, the sales tax, but this also doesn't collect, this does not include anything with the CARES Act, right?
No, no. That would be intergovernmental revenue, and it's in a, it's not in this presentation at all. So then each of the different categories that we have, obviously, the largest category is retail sales. This includes online sales as well. We were expecting 1.33, collected 1.88, it's $545,000 more. And that's an increase of 655,000 compared to last year.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a big issue in the past in regards to collecting for online sales.
Right.
At what point did that start to really come in?
I believe that Wayfair, I'd have to go back and look and see when the exact date of the Wayfair decision was made.
We'll get back to you on it, but I think we started seeing the changes in 2019.
It was last fiscal year, it seems like, when it started going.
So we're starting to get a lot more collections on that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it is definitely, I think, one of the reasons why we fared so well during the lockdowns. Because there was definitely an increase in Amazon.
Well, this was a big deal. As a matter of fact, I think, didn't you write a letter to the state? And we had pushed to make sure that we were collecting these revenues because our town had so much online sales. You can see these trucks, you can see the Amazon trucks nonstop, constantly in our roads. So I'm glad to see that we're starting to get some great results from that.
Absolutely.
So the other thing, and it's not on this particular screen, but we've also experienced now that the short-term rentals have been mandated to collect tax, I think that's also another factor. We're not seeing it here, but overall, that's contributed to our, our tax that we have collected as well.
Mayor? Grady, on that issue, are we having any problem collecting?
Those that are with the reputable companies, if they're doing it on their own, it's a little bit under the radar. It's a little bit more challenging. Those that are using, you know, the property management companies, I believe that they're all doing it properly. It's only those that are doing it on their own. But the Airbnbs, the VRBOs, Homestay, all those other ones, my understanding is that the state is collecting that on our behalf and then remitting it to us in our, in the amounts that they remit to us.
Yeah, each of those companies actually collect that tax from the person that's going to be renting the residence. And then the company VRBO, Airbnb remits it to the state and then forwards it to us, so. It does take a lot of the uncertainty out as far as an individual homeowner.
We don't have any idea, I assume, how much we're losing by individuals who aren't paying the rental tax.
I wouldn't be able to quantify it because it's, it's hard to know how many people are renting their homes either by the weekend or even by the month without them either advertising, you know, if their home's on Zillow, we can see. And if they're not listed in our database as a rental, rental home, then we can make contact. It does make it more difficult, but.
Do we work, do we work with the real estate agents, agencies at all?
This was before your time, but we did actually. We, we worked with the real estate companies that, we actually did a letter that went off to them. And we also have used our newsletter to kind of get the word out to residents. And then we've had people, actually, it's really funny, we will have people report others, like they believe that their neighbors are doing this and it may not be an Airbnb or such. So we get people reporting that to us. And then I know when we do the, if we have business license and such, that's something that we sporadically look at and just make sure that, that this may be something that might, should be contributing, that may not be. We also have the ability, we have an auditor that's employed by the town that has a working relationship with the Department of Revenue. And so, you know, we've worked with him on strategies as well.
Thank you, Mayor. So another policy of the council in the last few years, I think, that had been supported was the auto sales. And that is incorporated in this number as well?
Correct.
Okay, and that, good timing because tonight we'll be talking about indoor auto sales as well. So I think these high, high-ticket items have always been, from, from my perspective, always been important to try to raise these, the revenues for our community by having high-ticket luxury type of items in our community, so. And then the retail hotel and hotel taxes, that is not incorporated in that, is that correct?
Not in this one, no.
Okay.
That would be in services.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, could you get with Captain Kratzser? And I know it might be something that we could look into. We definitely know the party houses that have been continuously, weekends kicking out huge parties and renting and everything. Could we make sure that the ones that MCSO is continuously responding to, the owners of those homes are on the collection list?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I do know that the one particular instance is compliant. But yes, we do, we do get, we do get contacts from code enforcement. We haven't, Larry and I haven't had a conversation as far as making sure that that door is open, so I will.
Mayor, yeah, that's a good follow-up question. Do you have the ability to identify by the resident whether they pay? I know MaricopaCounty.gov, you can do a property, residential property search, and you can identify the properties that they're responsible to identify whether they're rental properties or not. And I believe that there's a fine associated with not, not disclosing whether it's an investment property or not in Maricopa County. Do we have all those records?
We have access to them, and we actually have downloads of the partial numbers. A lot of that went back kind of at the same time when we were doing environmental fee and getting records. There is a requirement that people report their property classification, unfortunately. There is some lag time and some confidence level with the county's process of getting those classifications updated or changed, especially when a property is sold. So there is some, some confusion that can happen there. There is, as far as the assessments go, the assessment ratios between residential rental properties and primary residence, they're the same assessment ratio. So as far as property tax calculations and everything go, that it doesn't matter.
Just talking about rental tax, yeah.
But as far as residential rentals, there's not a requirement for a vacation rental to be listed as residential rental or classified, since it might be that person's primary residence as well, that they're just renting out on the weekends. But there are, it's definitely a start and that we use that to make contact with people. All right. All right, so the next slide is construction. Obviously, the most erratic of all the TPT. We still, we had budgeted 380,000, collected 505. It's 125,000 more than what we had expected, and also an increase of 120,000 compared to last year. There's going to be more changes, it's going to be more, you know, it's just one of those categories that goes up and down kind of at will, so. But looked good for the first quarter. This one was kind of interesting because you can see that the last four years or three years on this followed pretty close. You can see that the entire fiscal year '21 first quarter is, is quite a bit higher. It was something that jumped out at me. I think a lot of that has to do with the increased internet services, people working from home, things like Zoom subscriptions are included in this, cable, you know, internet services, that sort of thing. So maybe more people are doing Netflix and. So maybe more people are doing Netflix and in, um, Amazon Prime, I don't know, um, but hopefully that continues. So we had budgeted three hundred thousand, uh, collected four hundred and eighty-five, obviously a difference of a hundred and eighty-five thousand more. And it increased eighty-three thousand over last year. Next is real estate. This does include, uh, the long-term portion of residential rental as well as commercial rentals. Uh, we budgeted a hundred and seventy, collected two ten, forty thousand more. It's an increase of ten thousand over last year. The trend is following prior years, but this is one that I'm particularly looking at going forward. If we start losing a lot of businesses, we're going to lose commercial rental space. We just want to keep an eye on this one, um, going forward. Looking okay right now, just, uh, heads up. This one was also a little bit surprising. Um, restaurants and bars, obviously, we know they were hit pretty hard. There was actually no change as far as the overall collections, but we still had the three tenths of a percentage increase that helped absorb some of it, so, um, it's kind of artificially inflated as far as a quarter goes as compared to last year. Uh, we budgeted two hundred and twenty thousand and that ended up collecting a hundred and eighty-five. And then finally, for TPT is services, this includes hotel taxes, um, the vacation rentals, golf tours. Budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand, collected a hundred and seventy, eighty thousand less. However, it was still a twenty-one thousand dollar increase from last year. This, I anticipate, especially today, after getting the press release that a DARE was completed and, uh, we're going to be renting out some more rooms there. I'd expect this to, to start increasing with those activities. Plus, I should mention, we're going into the busier part of the year, um, starting with the second quarter, so.
So in case you missed it, he was saying that a DARE is in Fountain Hills.
Yes, yes, yes. Leave it there. Anyway, um, so then I've got a couple of slides on state shared revenue. First was, uh, sales tax is on the left. Um, it took a bit of a dip in September for collections. It was fifty-five thousand dollars, less than what we had budgeted for the quarter, um, but that's all right. We'll, uh, we'll see where it goes from here. The chart on the right is the income tax, the most boring chart that you'll see the entire year. You can see the progress through the year as it just goes straight across because it's, it won't change. All right, and then, uh, vehicle, these two are kind of interesting too. The VLT, uh, we had budgeted two hundred and ninety, actually collected three hundred and thirty. You can see it's well above the other years. And then the HERF revenue, budgeted four hundred and forty and collected four hundred and twenty-five. So what I'm seeing, people are still buying cars, we're still getting, uh, VLT. These are both, um, calculated countywide. So it's not necessarily just Fountain Hills activity, but, uh, the whole county. So people are buying new cars, they're just not driving them as much. They're electric or they're getting better gas mileage, I don't know, but we're not seeing a rise in the HERF revenues, so. We'll keep going with that.
And David, if you could just explain, um, so the state shared revenue is really, um, formula-based.
Correct.
So based on our per rata share of the pie, it's based on our population and it's redistributed to all the cities and towns and the counties based on their populations.
Correct.
I have to ask before you go on, um, what's the deal with twenty twenty with the HERF, with August?
Okay, so there was a one-time payout, uh, last, last year, last August. I believe that had to do with the DPS, um, fee that they were collecting.
Well, the, the legislature had a, a one-time bump up for cities of a minimum size, so everyone got like a one-time, do you remember it was like? I want to say it was a hundred and seventy or a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That, that's how it equaled out.
Kind of an equalization payment. But yeah, don't expect one of those. Don't expect one of those this year. All right, so then that, uh, brings me to the last slide as far, as far as, uh, if you recall, in June, during the budget adoption, there were a couple of measures that, that the council took, um, that we were going to identify certain high priority CIP projects, put others on hold, um, until we had the first quarter revenues. Eleven projects are currently on hold. Um, those projects equate to about one point nine million dollars. All of those projects, um, are in the capital projects fund and would be, uh, funded using that fund balance. Uh, we just got final numbers, uh, for fiscal year twenty, um, and that fund ended with six point one million total. So, um, the other, uh, consideration is the cost of living increase. That was, uh, we had budgeted a two point five percent increase beginning in January. Depending on the first quarter revenues, uh, that's council's decision if that actually happens. Uh, it equates to about, it, it equates to fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, over the remainder, or the second half of the fiscal year. Staff will come back at the next meeting at November seventeenth and get your direction as far as those go.
David, I'm not entirely clear as to what you were saying about the FY twenty-one CIP projects.
Okay, so, so we had certain projects, we had five projects that we considered, uh, high priority. One was Golden Eagle Empowerment, one was the Traffic Circle, one was Panorama Storm Drain, then the Fountain Lighting.
Shoulder, and the Shoulder Whiting.
And the Shoulder.
Fountain Hills Shoulder Whiting.
So those, we continued working on, uh, through the first quarter. Uh, the other eleven, we put on hold pending first quarter revenues, kind of see where we're at. And then it was going to come back to council basically, uh, to decide if any of those remaining eleven projects move forward.
Thank you. I, um, am I correct in assuming that the reason it looks pretty good first quarter is because we were so careful in budgeting because of concern about COVID? Is that, that must have made a, a big difference, I would assume.
Yes.
You seem hesitant. You seem hesitant.
I, I don't want to, you know, that it's, um, there, there were considerations taken because of the COVID situation. A lot of our revenue projections, um, you know, we're pretty conservative to begin with. We don't want to say that we're going to be bringing in a lot of money and then make plans to spend it somehow and then fall short and have to remove things from budget, so.
The council member is correct though, um, we had a lot more wants and needs than needs and that those kind of got, um, scrapped and then the cost of living adjustment at the time that we had put that as an example. We had that put together, that was going to be affected July first. I had recommended, once we revised our budget figures, to postpone that until January first. In fact, it even got reduced from three percent to two and a half percent. And again, to just take a look at how our revenues were projecting, because there was a lot of scary news out there and we just wanted to make sure that we were tracking correctly before we would recommend going forward. I just want to point out though, and I think David's already mentioned this, that all the capital projects, all sixteen, are fully budgeted this year. The council, at the time of the adoption of their bu- of the budget, I had recommended and you, um, concurred that what the five high priority projects were, we'd go forward with and the other eleven, we'd just defer until we had this meeting tonight. Same thing on the cost of living adjustment. Um, so rather than trying to get you to make a decision tonight, whereas this is just a presentation, we'll come back next month with, um, decision points and we'll also outline what these projects are. Because right now, you're not seeing what the projects are.
Yeah, I was, uh, yeah, I was going to suggest, and I'm sure you do this, um, first of all, we don't want to be foolish about it because we don't know what's going to happen the rest of the year. But also, if there are any of the eleven projects that you think are worthy of funding, um, I suspect you'll come back with a prioritized list.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I think there've been a number of factors, you know, the, the point three percent increase definitely was a, was a positive impact and, uh, you know, people still kept spending during the whole lockdown thing as far as, you know, Target and our grocery stores and online. So the spending didn't dip locally as much as, as we thought. And I think a lot of your projected revenue, uh, estimates were, like you said, conservative or a little bit lower than what they ordinarily would have been, so that, that's a big difference. And, uh, and so I, I appreciate your summary of, um, the projects coming up. I mean, I, I, obviously, we're going to hear more on November seventeenth, but I assume we'll be in a, enough time has gone by that we're confident to make some, some projections here on future spending?
Yeah, in fact, um, just as part of your financial policies, um, any surplus within the year, we did make a, a modification to that financial policy, but still, um, despite that, the surplus that we ended last year with still funded, um, and went into the capital fund, correct?
Correct.
So.
We actually, um, a lot of that, we have to wait until after our audits complete before we can make that transfer into the capital fund. Auditors right now are just doing draft financials, so we should have the actual CAFER, uh, finished financials for you at this meeting as well. Um, and then I'll be able to give you an amount that's being transferred in addition, that will add to that six point one million figure for end of, the end of the year balance, so.
So the six point one is prior to any surplus going into that?
Correct, correct. That's the end of last fiscal year.
If you were to estimate, what would you say based on the un-audited?
Looks like it's going to be between a million, million and a half that's going to go towards capital.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Director. I think, is that, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead here. Is there another slide?
No, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Um, again, thanks for, um, the way that you did budget it and, um, but also, like Mike was pointing out, the real numbers between last year and this year were largely up too. And for whatever the reason is, uh, we're grateful because, um, uh, we're navigating through this now and, and we also do have the CARES money, which we were very, um, I, I think cautious with. So, um, I, I feel good going forward right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is call to the public. Do we have any cards?
No, we don't, no.
Okay, thank you. We have our consent agenda. Um, unless you have, like to remove something, could I please get a motion? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Um, get to the next regular agenda. Our first item is our appointments to the Board of Adjustment and other commissions here. It was so good to see so many interested people in these various positions. The council subcommittees were impressed with all of our applicants and they forward those names that they recommend for our consideration here tonight. So, um, I think I'll, I'll just do this in one motion, um, or, or I'll suggest a motion. Should, I, I'll just do it. There's a lot of names, so. Um, I would, uh, move to appoint the following to the various boards and commissions. For the Board of Adjustment, incumbent Carol Perica and incumbent Paul Ryan. For Community Services Advisory Commission, incumbent Amy Arnold. Rory Wilson, Stephen Barnes and Giselle Batista as the youth member. McDowell Mountain Preservation, we have incumbent Janice Holden and DJ Willard. For P and Z, we have incumbent Scott Schlossberg and Jesse Brunswick. For Sister Cities, we have Eric Walker and James Wilson. And for Strategic Planning Commission, we have incumbents Gerard Basalia and incumbent Cynthia Magazine and Patrick Garman. Um, if you're here, um, would you, if you'd like to stand and have us recognize you, we'd love to do that. Any of the folks that I mentioned here tonight? Oh, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, I wanted to thank all of the applicants and those who didn't get, there were so many that those, um, we, we keep those and for the next time we have, um, any kind of, uh, uh, term ending or a vacancy, I want to thank the council because they have a lot of interviews to do and I really appreciate that you did that and our staff and, and again, thanks to those earlier that we recognized who have served. Yes, sir.
In the time I've served on the council, I've never seen so many applicants, uh, for these positions. And that's really a sign of a healthy community, um, a sign that people really care and want to be involved. And so I just wanted to mention that, thank all of the applicants, um, because, and, and urge them to consider reapplying if they didn't get chosen.
Uh, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Vice Mayor Sharnow, myself and Councilmember Magazine sat on two of the panels. And I have to tell you, the resumes were so impressive, um, such backgrounds. I actually got to meet a rocket scientist, so, uh, I was going to use my line, you know, but I let it go. But, uh, it was really impressive, the amount of, uh, the background that people had and, um, it was a really tough decision. When, um, we got done and deliberated, uh, it was a really tough decision. So, um, before, we were actually short people and couldn't get people to apply and now we had just stellar candidates and lots of them. So I second Councilmember Magazine's, um, to please, his suggestion to please reapply and get, um, other, get involved in other areas of the town because, um, it was a really stellar group of people, so, thank you.
Thank you for saying that. Okay, next we are moving on to a public here. Oh, oh, I didn't do that.
Was there, Mayor, was there a second?
Thank you, thank you for seconding it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you all. Now, I'll go on to, I was so proud that I remembered we have a public hearing here, but, um, we're going to have a public hearing about an ordinance amending Chapter twelve, commercial zoning districts. This is about the indoor vehicles that you were talking about, so I'll open the public hearing, we'll hear the report, talk, and we'll see if we have any speaker cards and then we'll close the hearing and vote.
Mayor and council, um, I'd like to introduce, um, Farhad Tavasoli. He's our senior planner and you'll recall, um, he recently, uh, made his debut on the Platte two oh eight, uh, item. So he has decided to still come back, so we're, we're pleased to have him back. Thank you, Farhad.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council. What I have before you is KZ two thousand, uh, zero eight. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment proposal initiated by staff to allow indoor vehicle sales in the, uh, CC, C two and C three zoning district or in long form, the, the common commercial, the, uh, intermediate commercial and general commercial zoning districts. Now, this follows a zoning ordinance text amendment that was approved back in February. Seems like forever ago, but, um, in February, uh, February twentieth, I believe. And, uh, it was a proposal, uh, by the, a member of the public which allowed indoor vehicles, vehicle sales in C one zoning district. Consequently, um, that followed with the opening of the Vet, uh, Vets Auto Center in the Red Rock Business Park, in the northeast corner of Saguaro and Shea Boulevard. So at this point, staff kind of stood back and took a comprehensive look at the zoning ordinance and, uh, as I said, decided to initiate this zoning ordinance text amendment request with some adjustments in order to allow this same use in, uh, for the other, uh, commercial zoning districts. So this, here is a table that I've, I've kind of distilled the zoning ordinance into this table summarizing this use, indoor vehicle sales and where they're currently allowed in our commercial districts. You got the little red arrow in the C1 zoning district, because as I mentioned, that was the subject of a recent text amendment approval. So as you can see, currently, indoor vehicle sales is currently allowed by right in the C1 zoning district and in the C3 zoning district, which actually allows both indoor and outdoor. Within the C1 zoning district, the, it's capped at 5,000 square feet of space, and it also does not allow overnight parking. Now, with the zoning ordinance text amendment request, staff is proposing to allow indoor vehicle sales in the other zoning districts to expand the inventory, so to speak, of suitable properties within the Town of Fountain Hills for this use. Now, a note about the CC zoning district, it's common commercial, it is virtually the same in terms of allowed uses, virtually the same as the C1 zoning district. The common commercial zoning district, if you were to read the ordinance, it caters to more of a demographic, smaller market demographic, smaller properties, and the development standards are a little different, but as far as the use is allowed, they're virtually So in the C2 zoning district, the, so with the proposal, staff is recommending that the indoors, indoor vehicle sales be allowed in the C2 zoning district as a matter of right, just as it is allowed in the C1, and outdoor vehicle sales be allowed under the condition of a special use permit. In, with this zoning district, there's no limit as far as the square footage is concerned, and overnight parking in the C2 district would be permitted. Because as there, as things are right now, there are other uses there that do require some graveyard shifts, so to speak, doing some stocking the shelves and for some of the other businesses. And there's no change to the C3 zoning district with regard to this use, as it's, it allows indoor vehicle sales, both indoor and outdoor. We did clean up the language a little bit with regard to the C3 zoning district to state specifically that indoor vehicle sales are allowed as well as a matter of right in that So with that short presentation, staff recommends approval of ordinance 20-21, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilman?
You mentioned overnight, but, and I didn't see it in the write-up, but it may be there. What about outside storage, which is different than just overnight parking?
Madam Mayor, councilmember Magazine, outside storage of vehicles you're referring to? Yeah, that was not addressed in this ordinance, I believe, and John may correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe that's allowed in the C3 zoning district as a matter of right, and in the C2 with a special use permit.
Okay, I want to make sure that's clarified because parking overnight is different from storage, in my view.
That is.
And so I just want to get that clarified.
Sure, and at least the intent is to refer to customer parking or employee parking, but not as, but not as storage.
But, but they wouldn't be parking there overnight, though?
That is correct, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
Yep.
Mayor, councilmember Magazine, I want to make sure that we're understanding the question here and that maybe this distinction we have in the zoning world. If somebody's leaving their display parked outside, we don't call that storage. And so if you're really talking about somebody storing vehicles, like you have the personal storage of U-Haul, not the U-Haul, the RV storage lots where people own it and they park it someplace else to store it, that is a different category that's already covered in the code. If you're talking about a dealership leaving inventory outside in a parking lot or behind some kind of fenced area, that is covered in the code.
That's what I was referring to.
Right, that's what I'm making, yeah. So that is covered.
How, what does it say?
Because in the CC, in the C1, in the C2 by right, it requires all display to be indoors. You can't do any of that, you can't do any of the parking outside till you get to the C2 because of other uses in the C2 district that do already allow outdoor parking. You could have, that's storage, but if it is being stored versus displayed, again, there's some requirements to go with that, but in the C2, to have the vehicles outside would require the SUP.
SUP in the C2?
In the C2, to be outside endorsed by right.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly on the, so there's currently no limit for C2 on outside, well, maximum display area, so that's not changing with the proposal, right? So my only question is if someone comes in and they want outside, and they come, they need to come in for SUP, so depending on if there's a semi-sensitive location, I mean, can the maximum display area be specified within the SUP then, if there's a concern there as far as it's too big or what have you?
Correct, that is something, Madam Mayor, councilmember Sharnow, that's something that the council can consider as one of the conditions for approval.
For SUP?
Special use permit.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards? No? Anybody ready to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Are we closing the hearing?
Yeah.
Close hearing, then vote. Close the hearing, then vote.
We are now. Do we have any discussion?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Put your alarm, or you put your thing on.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance 20-21 as presented, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next is another public hearing, and this is about signs. I'll call for the public hearing to begin. And is this, Grady, do you have anything for that?
Yeah, so John Wesley, our Development Services Director, will be presenting the staff report on this particular public hearing.
Good to be with you again with another exciting ordinance change. As you know, we have been working on a comprehensive update to our signed ordinance in the town, and we're still working on that, getting it prepared to bring to the council, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. But as part of that, one of the items that we identified that we thought we'd want to go ahead and just bring standalone for council consideration is a couple of amendments to the code to facilitate signage for some of our businesses in town. And so this is two specific pieces of what will be the comprehensive change that we will be bringing a little later. As we've worked on, excuse me, the revised sign code, we have, again, identified a couple of items based on our review of some other town codes and what they have, and discussions we had with the Citizens Committee that helped us with this, to, again, provide a little bit more flexibility in how we can measure signs and allow them in certain situations. So one of the two proposed changes is in Section 607G of the sign code, where we deal with how we measure the size of signs. And we do it in a variety of ways, depending upon the type of sign and its configuration. One type of sign are like those shown in the illustrations where they use individual letters and symbols rather than a sign panel of some kind. And in the current code, it says that, and they're allowed to be maximum of certain size based on the square footage, I'll just use 50 square feet for the example here. So the, we, the code says that we draw a simple rectangle around the sign, and as long as it's 50 square feet or less, it's fine. And so that's fine, it's easy, but it doesn't allow for a lot of creativity or flexibility in the design of those signs. So if we change the sign type to something that looks like this, that has something a little bit more of a flair with it, and the code says that we measure it by doing a rectangle around it, and that's our only choice, you get a lot of wasted space. And so that 50 square feet of sign area means the sign itself is something smaller than what the code would allow. And so to deal with that, what we're suggesting is that we allow at least, or up to two geometric shapes to define the area by the sign. As long as those two geometric shapes touch at least one point, then we combine those two areas to get to the maximum sign area. So you can see that cuts out, and this very simple illustration probably could have done something a little bit more creative, but it shows some of that wasted space is now removed from what's counted towards sign area, so it then allows the sign to be bigger. And so with that, again, encourage a little bit more creativity in how the signs look and not just get rectangles. So that's one proposal for the change to the sign ordinance. The other has to do with wall signs. Currently, our code allows one square foot of sign area per foot of frontage for the business. And again, as we looked at other communities, we saw most communities allow something larger than that. And not wanting to be too crazy and too radical in making changes since we're doing a couple of different things, we are recommending it go to one and a half square feet of sign area per linear frontage to allow signs to be that little bit bigger than what they are today. And that's a pretty simple change and putting illustrations with that one. So those are our proposed changes that we're suggesting the council go ahead and approve now. We've had some citizens, businesses have been looking to do some new signage, they've known this is in the works, have been putting that new signage on hold, hoping this would get approved, so it's part of why we went ahead and brought this to the council this evening.
Thank you. Director, any questions over here?
Yes.
Councilman Spellic.
John, did Vice Mayor Sharnow make you use an illustration signifying Wisconsin?
I've been told not to say, councilmember, where that came from.
That's your question, huh? Councilman?
John, do we have any regulations with regard to colors? Do we have a palette, for example?
Mayor, councilmember, no, not with regard to sign, well, really not with anything specifically. We, in the Chapter 19 of the sign ordinance, of the zoning ordinance, there is a section about materials and colors, just generally for buildings more than really designate signs and encourages, you know, certain earth kind of tone colors and discourages some of the lighter, more reflective colors. That's as close as we get to really do anything to regulate colors.
In other words, carte blanche.
Sorry?
In other words, it's carte blanche. People can do what they want.
Pretty much.
Under the law, yeah, you. If we wanted to, can we regulate colors? The reason, let me tell you why I'm raising this. I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm getting a little tired of hearing the colors on Park Place. And if we don't regulate colors of signs in any way, people could put up some really garish signs, you know, orange, green, and turquoise stripes. I mean, they could do anything they want. And that does concern me.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, my position, without speaking too out of hand, is that I think the council can enact reasonable design standards in general. I've never actually looked at whether you can go so far as to mandate a specific color on a building. Maybe John has before.
I wasn't suggesting a specific color, I said a palette to choose from.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question either, but it sounds like John might have, might have looked at it.
Well, Mayor, councilmember, I don't really know for sure, but one of my immediate concerns is, do you have various corporate colors and bandings and things that are established? And I'm not sure, we wouldn't get afoul of some of the read decision with regulating content if we started getting into color because of, again, some of those established corporate colors that different companies have. But again, I don't know that for sure, we'd have to talk about it.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? No? There are no other comments? I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 20-22?
In light of Councilman Spellic's comment, if we, if we look at colors, I would suggest we ban orange and black, but just, just a suggestion, and with that, I move to approve ordinance 20-22 as submitted.
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Next, we are going to talk about another ordinance. Is this you, Grady?
Actually, we'll have our town attorney brief the council on this particular report.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Before you tonight is ordinance 20-25. As the council's aware and as is detailed in the staff report, upcoming, in a couple of weeks, Arizona voters will decide whether to approve Proposition 207, which has been entitled the Smart and Safe Arizona Act. One of the effects of this act would be to legalize recreational marijuana in Arizona. The act allows cities and towns to do several things. One of the things that it allows for is for municipalities to prohibit or regulate recreational marijuana establishments and testing facilities from operating within jurisdictions. So either impose zoning regulations or prohibit altogether, with the exception of dual licensees in the case of recreational marijuana establishments. Before you tonight is an ordinance that does just that, that prospectively and conditional upon approval of Proposition 207 itself, would prohibit the operation of those facilities, among other things. Recognizing that this is, the intent of the ordinance is to preserve the ability to regulate later on, in the event that the act passes, as we're able to see how things progress over time, it preserves the town's ability to adopt those reasonable zoning restrictions and regulations. Again, the ordinance will not become effective unless and until the act is approved and becomes effective when the governor signs it, which I believe is in early December, as I'm, as I'm informed. The ordinance, a similar ordinance has been adopted or will be adopted in several other municipalities throughout the state. The ones I'm aware of, there are likely others, but the ones that I'm aware of are Town of Gilbert, El Mirage, Payson, Tolleson, Page. And if the council approves this ordinance tonight, the Town of Fountain Hills would join that group. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Aaron, any questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I admit, I admit to being a little perplexed. Not something new. The recitals. Town seeks to protect public health, safety, and welfare by prohibiting marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities, et cetera. Am I incorrect, or did we not vote unanimously that subject to approval of this by the voters, that we were going to take a position against recreational marijuana in Fountain Hills? Did we not take a vote on that? We didn't?
I don't believe so, Mayor and Councilman.
Okay, well, I'm looking at Section 11-2-6, and it's got eight or nine exceptions. People certain age can grow a certain number, higher age a certain number, and so on and so forth. And I'm trying to figure out, if we don't want recreational marijuana, why are we doing this? And how are we going to enforce it? And do you really think that people are, some people are going to grow it and try to sell it out on the street?
So, Mayor, members of council, I believe the answer to that question is, first, with respect to Section 11-2-6, marijuana at a primary residence for personal use, the act, if approved, Proposition 207, if approved, will allow that, and it doesn't permit a city or town to ban home use or home consumption of marijuana, including growth.
That's pretty stupid.
My personal opinions aside, one way or the other, that's not something that the proposition would allow for. So what we're providing for in this ordinance or intend to provide for is to impose reasonable health and safety standards to the extent the law would allow. What we cannot do is enact a flat ban on home use or home growth.
Where do the numbers come from? Meaning, six marijuana plants, 12 marijuana plants, where do these come from?
Mayor and Councilman Magazine, from Proposition 207 itself.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, I give up.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we have any speaker cards on this item? Okay, thank you. First one is Doug Hebert.
My name's Doug Hebert. I'm a retired special agent with the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration. Drug Enforcement Administration. It's been my experience, I'm also on the coalition, the Fountain Hills Coalition here as well. It's been my experience that, you know, drug use, misuse, and abuse is pretty much based on its access and availability. And I think we don't have to look any further than what happened the past two decades with the pharmaceutical industry and the opioid crisis, where they basically just flooded the market, made opioid medications accessible and available, misled the public on the potential for abuse, and now we've got a situation where we're losing 70,000 people a year with pharmaceutical drug overdoses. And the same thing with this whole marijuana proposition. I'm hoping that it doesn't pass, but in the event it does, we can just look no further than some of the issues that Colorado is having. They just did a recent survey of the recreational marijuana users in Colorado, and 67% of them admit to driving under the influence in automobiles, and 25, or 27% of those admit to driving under the influence on a daily basis. So we have other things to consider as a result of that. As a result to test, or relates to testing facilities, growing facilities, that type of thing, that some companies may want to bring into the community, I think we have to take into consideration a recent study by the California Marijuana Impact Report that came out and said that for a high-quality marijuana plant, approximately one pound requires 450 to 900 gallons of water to plant. And also, you've got the pesticides, the herbicides, the fungicides, and everything that go with that, and all that goes into our water system that the water treatment plants have to consider when trying to treat the water. And finally, you know, this whole bunk about the tax dollars that it will generate and that type of thing. In Colorado, again, they did a study, and they said for every tax dollar that was generated as a result of the marijuana industry, that it costs $4.50 to mitigate that as it related to healthcare costs and other things, and along with high school dropouts and the whole social costs associated with the marijuana industry. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next one is Shelley Maury. Maury, I'm sorry.
Hi. Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here tonight, Shelley Maury, and I'm the, I've been the executive director for the Fountain Hills Coalition for about the past seven years. And I'm actually relieved tonight. I usually come here and speak in opposition of something, so tonight I'm like here in support, so, phew, the pressure's off. So it was 10 years ago when medical marijuana passed by the slimmest of margins. At that time, supporters of the proposition were quoted as saying they were only interested in medical marijuana, about helping patients with serious illnesses. But now we know this issue is no longer about patients, it's about profits. And that's really what it is. It's addiction for profit. Prop 207 makes any type of marijuana, any form of marijuana, any THC level of marijuana legal in our state. I'm thankful and grateful to this council for having the foresight to see the train wreck that is coming if Prop 207 passes. And what do I mean by the train wreck? Youth marijuana use will increase. It already has and will continue to increase. What is so smart about your preemptive move is that studies show us that youth who live near marijuana stores, dispensaries, retailers are more likely to use marijuana than those who do not. The study was published in the Journal of Addiction. The study proves what parents, teachers, and coalitions have been saying for decades. Marijuana commercialization increases drug use. Additionally, living near a dispensary with advertisements talking about signs had a four to six-fold greater impact on both use and frequency of use. Plain and simple, 207 is bad policy. If the town council does not pass this ordinance, you will be bound by 19 pages of law written by cannabis executives for cannabis businesses. The marijuana industry will tell you what they can and cannot do in Fountain Hills, and you will not have a say. Ask the attorney. Because of the Voter Protection Act, nothing can be changed, amended, edited from this proposition. Prop 207 isn't just bad for town governments, it's bad for our workforce, bad for drivers, makes our roads less safe, and it doesn't provide one dime for K through 12 education. In Colorado, 67% of local jurisdictions have banned medical and recreational marijuana businesses. The marijuana business executives learned from this, and now they don't allow opt-outs in other states like the one they are pushing here in Arizona. By taking this action, parents and families have a choice. When people move to Arizona, they'll look around. Will they choose to raise their kids in a community that has more pot shops than McDonald's? Or will they choose a town like Fountain Hills, Gilbert, Page, Payson, that have taken action to ensure the safety of its citizens? If you ask me, the property values in Fountain Hills will go up if you pass this. I sure know where I would rather raise my child. In closing, I want to commend you for your vision. I want to commend you for putting the interest of our kids above cannabis. I want to commend you for putting the interest of this community above cannabis, and I want to commend you for stopping addiction for profit in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
First, thank you for all the work you've done over the years.
You're welcome.
Have you seen the ordinance?
I have.
And I know that there's nothing we can do about it, because this is the language that's in the, whatever it's called, it's coming before the voters. Do you think it's going to make any difference? I mean, this says basically, almost anybody can raise marijuana in their home. That's what it says.
That's correct.
And it can't be enforced, there's no way to enforce it. I mean, if they go beyond what this says, you can't enforce it. You can sell it on the street, you're not going to get caught. I know you think this is terrific, and I'm going to vote for it, I can't imagine what it accomplishes.
Well, Councilman Magazine, I will tell you that the other thing that will happen is that, you know, we know the black market will come in. What it does is, you're sending a signal. So I always talk to my children about signals, and we always talk about, what are the signals that you're sending to the community, to the kids, and to others? When we find that when marijuana is legalized, it sends the signal to kids that, hey, just go ahead and use. Your town, by taking this action, is sending the signal that we want to protect our kids and we want to protect our community. So that's a signal you're going to be sending. And I will tell you that if I'm a new person coming into a community, and there aren't pot shops, and you've got ordinances against marijuana shops and dispensaries here, I'm more likely to move my family there than in a community that has shops everywhere.
I understand.
I think it would.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It just feels like a Pyrrhic victory to me. But we'll see.
We'll see. There's hope. It's not inevitable.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Aaron, do you want to?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman Magazine, the one thing that I did want to bring up with respect to that is, at a minimum, we're making sure that whatever the council decides to do or not do in the future, we preserve the right to be able to do that by virtue of this ordinance. In other words, to the extent we want to enact zoning regulations, you know, that preserves the ability to do that, that's really the primary purpose of being here tonight, aside from what it actually does, which is enact for right now, until the council acts otherwise, a prohibition on those activities in town. So I do think it accomplishes those purposes to those.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further remarks? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I just want to commend staff for bringing this forward to us. I think it is an important preemptive strike in this battle that we seem to be waging every few years. And as Councilman Magazine, you know, pointed out, I mean, there's a lot of things in that proposition that people aren't aware of, and this is just a prime example. And I know a lot of people probably have voted already, but obviously would urge anyone who hasn't to vote no, because this is not a good thing. But I fully support this proposed ordinance, and it's the most we can do at this point. And we certainly don't want these types of recreational dispensaries up here if the proposition passes. I mean, worst-case scenario, if there is an existing license that's valid out there, we would have one that we can't do anything about. So I move approval of ordinance 20-.
There's more cards.
Oh, sorry. Okay. It's all good.
Thank you. I was looking at the cards. The other two are from individuals that just wanted to comment in writing, but they both support the ordinance. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, thanks for cutting me off.
I wasn't getting those things.
I know you were on the road. You want to give these people a chance to talk.
Yeah. No, so I move to adopt ordinance 20-25.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it passes. Two more items. Our next is about holiday lights. Grady?
Yes, hi. We have on the phone with us Rachel Goodwin, our Community Services Director. The item before you is consideration for amending our contract with our holiday light provider. The reason for this is that, as you know, with this being a pandemic this year, a lot of people are looking forward to, you know, getting out during the Stroll in the Glow, and the Stroll in the Glow has had to, because of the pandemic, has had to really scale back a lot of the events. In fact, things like the Santa, going to sitting on Santa's lap for the kids, and the hayride, because of social distancing, that's not going to be able to happen. There's just, the event is going to look a lot different than we've seen in the past. And so staff was wanting to enhance what we have on the Avenue of the Fountains for lighting, and we are only talking about doing this one time. A few years ago, you recall that we had a contract, multi-year contract, the one that we're currently in, and the council at the time wanted to keep it capped at the current level. We were able to get a lot more money in terms of holiday lights and more fixtures and all that at the time, and then that contract ended, and then we did a request for proposal, and to pretty much pay for what we used to be able to do was about $50,000. And so we thought this year, since it's been kind of, as we've talked earlier tonight, it's been kind of a bummer of a year, a lot of people are, just have been housebound. This would be something that, not only for the Stroll in the Glow, that would be an enhancement, but it'd also be something that when they have house guests, they can drive, you know, down the town area and see the enhancements. I have on the phone Ms. Goodwin, who can also kind of talk about some of the things that she's talking about specifically to add to the displays. Rachel, are you there?
I am, thanks, Grady. Please let me know if you guys can hear me okay. This is the first time I've had to call in.
You're coming across very well.
Great. You did a wonderful job summing that up. We're considering a one-time addition to the holiday display, simply because of the pandemic situation, and in a way to sort of enhance the season, if you will. We've been in touch with our provider to make sure that they had additional elements available to be added if we choose to move forward with this. We are increasing, we are asking for a budget increase of up to $15,000 so that we have a little bit of wiggle room to figure out what we can do with that and how many more elements we could add. One of the biggest questions about this, of course, is funding. We believe we have savings from other events that have been canceled this year, such as our July 4th celebration and our back-to-school bash, that could be reallocated for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Do you have any questions for, yes, Councilman? Spelitch?
That's Councilmember Grinch. I'll start the comments with, before I get a million emails from everybody, I'm not anti-Christmas. I love Christmas. Please don't send me nasty emails. The no-mask vote was enough for me to put me over the edge. I just think, Rachel, $15,000 is a significant amount of money. We have capital improvement projects. When we spend money, that we have something that's tangible, that we keep, that we continuously use and everything. I would ask that, from what I determined, that this will only be a rental for 30 days, and then we'll give it back. I would like staffer to look into the fact of possibly purchasing this display for something that the town would be able to hold on to, that we would use every year, and that if it's like $15,000 to buy it versus $10,000 to rent it, I think it's wise, better spending a dollar to have something that we can keep and put up every year and that the town can enjoy yearly versus a one-time 30-days thing. So I don't know if that's a possibility, if you can look into that, or Grady, you can look into that.
I will tell you, we thought about the same thing a few years ago, and part of the issue is the storage for some of these items. Rachel, do you remember, like, the trees? Because we were able to get, when we were helping the community try to help with the blue tree or the first responders' tree, do you remember what it was to purchase the tree outright with the ornaments and everything that was on it? That's just as an example of what this might cost. Rachel, do you remember that?
If I had to recall, Grady, I want to say it was upwards of $25,000 just for the purchase of it. That didn't include the annual install and storage. One of the highlights of our display is that we do own a lot of the ground-level displays, so the train or the different light-up figurines that we have. We do own those, which is a benefit to us, but we do pay for annual maintenance and storage of those as well. So that is a, there is a trade-off there.
So my understanding, the tree that they're doing again this year, is it between $6,000 and $8,000? Or is it upwards of 10? I'm just trying to remember. Was it 10?
I, yeah, I believe it's 10.
Because I seem to think it's about three times the cost of what the rental is. But the rental also includes the setup, the take-down, you know, all the hookup of the power, and then the storage that they store for the next year. If the council is, please, if they're interested in doing enhancements like this before you, we'd be happy to look into seeing what that might be.
I just think, I mean, I don't know what the other council members think, but I mean, like I said, $15,000 here, $10,000 there, 12 here. I mean, you know, the town spends money, and we have to, and I think the residents deserve it. But I just think if we could get an estimate, I mean, I don't think it would be more than a phone call. Possibly the company that's renting this to us would be interested in selling it to us so that they could improve or get another something else. I just would like, just to explore the option, but I'll defer to my fellow council members. Thank you. You know, what the first thought comes to my mind with this discussion, Councilman Spelitch, is have you ever taken Christmas lights out to put them back up on your tree the next year in your own home and had a bulb out? I'm having nightmares just thinking about it. And I really can just see our town staff trying to take these things out of storage, $15,000 worth of Christmas lights and ornaments and things. I think that would be good money after bad, and it would depreciate very fast, and the likeliness of working every year would be probably very small. I think this is a good investment. I trust Rachel's judgment in regards to doing this. We've had this discussion in the past. We scaled back a previous contract. I think that our town manager makes a very good point, and I, with the fact that this has been a very, very difficult year, and I think it would be very nice to end with Fountain Hills having some recognition for having some amazing Christmas lights. Let's work with our newspapers, let's work with our, whatever, public event coordinators that we can get out and publicize that Fountain Hills is going to have an amazing light display, get all the restaurants to tie in with their social media, and really hopefully have a lot of added revenues to the community based on doing something like this. And so I'm in favor of it, and I think it's a good investment, and I trust that it could be spectacular, and a lot of the restaurants, the businesses, the residents will all very much appreciate this type of gesture.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? We just have one card that came in on the internet, and it's a couple that is interested in supporting the purchase. Okay, thank you so much.
As in, they're going to purchase it?
As in, us.
Oh, okay.
They're all for lunch.
Just want to clarify. Maybe we hit it.
Well, I agree, this is, you know, we were talking earlier with Sandy here, and we had originally called this, and hopefully we still will call it the Stroll in the Golden Glow. It's still our 50th, it's right around the time of it, and I'm all for it. Any other discussion? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I tend to be in favor of it as well, and I'm thinking maybe once we see what the $15,000 brings us, or approximately, you know, maybe for next year, you guys could study what David is talking about in terms of buying, renting, you know, maybe a long-term plan might be a good idea.
I think that's a good idea, because, you know, when you look at the totality of what we spend over the years, it does total a lot of money. And so, but I also think that And so, but I also think that there's something to be said about the storage. But we definitely will do that. We'll follow up and report back to the council on this. So, good thoughts.
Well, what are we doing?
So what I think I heard was that go forward with this. Was that not your motion?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll make, I make a motion that we approve the $15,000 one-time addition to the contract for the Christmas light decorations for this 2020, '21 season.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? What was that, David? Oh, my gosh. There you go. It passed. We have one more item. It's an amendment to a professional services agreement with CK Group. Grady?
Yes. Mayor and Council, you're aware that the roundabout is nearing completion. In fact, tomorrow, I understand that they're going to be finishing up the asphalt, so in front of the post office and also the roundabout. So the good news is that is nearing completion. We entered a, or we, shortly after the construction was underway, we discovered a potential pedestrian abicular safety issue, that while it was something that could have gone forward with, we think that we actually have a better design. We needed to get the contractor to undo what had been constructed, but it was early on in the construction phase, and we had to engage the CK Group to actually do a redesign, which really was a modification of the design. It wasn't a complete redesign. As a result, it resulted in design changes costing $16,701. So before you is a contract amendment to consider approving to make that design consideration change. And I have Public Works Director Justin Woldy here, who is also able to explain. I think in the staff report, I heard from one or two council members, there was a concern about the first design didn't have the detention basin, and the second design does. Do you want to kind of explain why that ended up being in this new design?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. And the town manager's done an excellent job of briefing us on the changes that were necessary to make these drainage improvements. A couple of the questions that we received, and they're very similar, but this is the primary question, not only from elected officials, but passer-bys, and folks that come out and look at it on a regular basis, as part of their regular routine for hiking, biking to the post office. The question is this: Why are you putting in the retention basins now, and why were they not required as part of the original design for the southwest corner? The answer, and I don't want to complicate this, is based on a 10-year storm event. During the initial design, that included the eastbound approach, right turn pocket to southbound, there was adequate pavement width, meaning we had a wide enough street there, that during a 10-year event, we were not likely to have issues, and we would be able to meet the dry lane requirement. What that means is closer to the median, or to the left or the right, depending on where you're at on the avenue approaching, you can move out of the deeper water as it's flowing after a storm event. We had adequate width, so when we reduced that substantially, by almost two-thirds, down to about 15 feet at the narrowest point, we no longer have the ability to maintain the minimum requirement for dry lane. That's why the retention basins were added. What these will do is they will not only collect the storm water after an event and slow them down and flow them through, but they will also collect the, what we refer to as nuisance waters. And let me explain that a little bit about this area. We have upstream from Town Hall, two retention basins that are associated with two developments on the south side of the avenue. After storm events, there are large quantities of water stored in those basins, and then they either flow through, and the material that doesn't flow through is then pumped. So for maybe one to two days, maybe three or even more days after a storm event, there's water constantly running down the avenue. And we get a lot of calls about broken water mains, broken irrigation. This will help to minimize some of those issues by diverting that into these retention basins and allow them to either perk into the system or flow through. It should also be noted, and this is important, that the water, these are just retention basins. So when they reach capacity after, depending on the storm event severity, water will be flowing out, and it will continue down the avenue in front of Town Hall, actually all the way to Saguaro, and then from there, it will either flow north or south to Parkview or almost El Lago, and that's where it actually enters our storm drain system that dumps it into Fountain Channel and then into Kiwanis Wash. That was a long explanation about a little bit of drainage, but I wanted to try to explain it to the best of our ability for the questions that had been asked, not only of the elected body, but also of the residents. Are there any additional questions I may be able to help with?
Any questions?
Very soon, council member. So, the final paving for the minor redesign will be tomorrow. And then the, provided everything goes just right, tomorrow night while everybody sleeps, the contractor will come in and remove all of the temporary construction devices. So all of the traffic control devices will be removed. I want to note this, and this is very, very important. There will still be a two-inch drop-off during, at the roundabout on the approach and the departure on all sides, there will be a two-inch drop-off. There's a reason for this. As you can see, we are finishing the downtown paving as directed by the mayor and council as part of last year. We're going to strip everything down, and then when we come back, which is very shortly, over the next two or three weeks, we are going to put that top two inches not only on the roundabout, but the Avenue of the Fountains west of Town Hall and La Montana, south of the Avenue of the Fountains. The intent is that we have basically one solid cap throughout the area, a part of Phase 2 of the downtown, so we don't have as many marriage lines. And also, during this process, there is a lot of tracking that happens from the truck traffic and the asphalt and the tacking material, and we want to minimize, or if at all possible, eliminate that truck tracking in the downtown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman?
First, I would hope that, once we have a definite date, let's get it on the website. Let's get the word out, so people are aware of it. Secondly, I'm from Massachusetts, and I don't know if this is apocryphal or not, but there was a story over the years that a rotary, which is what it was called in Massachusetts, was built, and they brought out the governor and the mayor and dignitaries, and they put them all in cars and convertibles to then break, cut the ribbon, and to go around the rotary. They found there was no way to get off the rotary.
Well, that's not going to happen here. Might have to go out there myself.
We'll just have people going around it backwards.
Rest assured that Bo Larson will send an alert first to the town manager, mayor and council, but the intent is that we will open it to traffic tomorrow, and then we will minimize any disruption in this area around Town Hall and the post office until after November 4th.
There will be, just to let you know, there will be intermittent closures as we're trying to do what I call the finishing up the seams, so that it has a nice finished look when it's all done.
Temporary in nature and short, in duration, an hour or two here or there.
Councilman?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And this will be at least completed without closures, once these Christmas lights are up and we're inviting the public and the communities to come visit Fountain Hills. We're not going to have road closure signs everywhere, and we're going to be open for business at least at that period of time. Would that be?
Yes, it's, we're looking at no later than around November 10th.
I think that's important.
No, it's absolutely.
Madam Mayor, and if I may add some clarification, there will not be any more closures. There will certainly be restrictions as we work around, but that'll be in the daytime. But there will not be any more hard closures after tomorrow night, if everything goes just as planned tomorrow. And I have great confidence in the contractor that's building this project, that they will be able to fulfill the obligation they've made.
It's not going to ring. Do we have any speaker cards? No. Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation. Do I have a motion? On page 94. You see it?
I'll move approval of the Fifth Amendment to Professional Services Agreement, C-2017-083 in the amount of $16,701.64 with the CK Group.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, David, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're consistent on the roundabout.
You're right on that.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Our next item is just the council discussion to the town manager, or motion to adjourn? Yeah, oh.
I have a comment.
Okay.
You know, with all this work being done downtown, with all of the paving that's being...
With all of the work that's being done downtown, with all of the paving and the policy that we've taken in the last few years to make sure that the downtown is beautiful, I would like to, I would like to see Rachel and her team, and even our economic development staff team, plan something for the downtown businesses, and something that would create a buzz and excitement, maybe even work with Judy Yates and the farmers' market, the artists, and really do something special in the spring, if we're allowed to, based on restrictions and social distancing and things. But we really need to focus on the downtown, focus on encouraging businesses to come to Fountain Hills and fill the vacancies that we have, and this might be a great opportunity to do just that.
We will definitely do that. We'll definitely take that and talk about that, see what we can do.
Thank you, Councilman.
Move for adjourned. Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you.